We'll call this meeting to the county commissioners' order. Please join us for a class.
To the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everybody today. We'll begin with the approval of our minutes from the March 21st meeting.
Luke approved March 21st and also the special meeting of joint executive sessions.
And we have a motion by Dale seconded by Tracy to approve the minutes of the March 21st regular and specials executive sessions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prosecutor's office, Colin Gud.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Prosecutor's office is asking to get a new hire approved. Her name is April Shipley. She will be our bookkeeper and receptionist. She'll be replacing Ruth Ann Dolp when she retires.
Okay. What kind of salary does she have?
Twenty-four and forty-seven.
Should be the normal starting salary.
Move to that for her. Okay, we have a motion by Dale seconded by Tracy to approve the 144 request of the prosecutor's office for the hire of April Shipley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. I can't remember, Colin. Do you know how, how long, um... I just, her, her name just slipped my mind, I think.
Ruth Ann.
Ruth Ann. How long has Ruth Ann been here? Been here a long time, actually.
I don't know the exact time, but yeah, it's been, it's been a while.
Okay.
I can find that out and get back to you.
Well, it's not that important.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Okay.
I think Sonya Davidson's been in our office the longest. But Ruth Ann's right up there, I believe.
Yeah. Okay. You need anything else from us today?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Emergency management director Wade Walling is here. Wade, do you have anything today?
I just have one thing I want to report, then I'll have something under there. So, Camp Bear Creek donated an emergency siren to Pitt County, so could you help pass that down? I'm just showing you a picture of it, for example, so you can see how big it is. I'm trying to figure out right now where the best place for placement is, and I'm thinking it's going to be up at the animal shelter on the hill. But I'm going to have to acquire a telephone pole, and then there's another couple pieces that I need from the manufacturer, which will be a box that will allow dispatch to activate it if we need it. I'm also working on building the parameters for that, when we should use it, when we should test it, as well as a media campaign that let the public know that we have it, and that once it goes into implementation or deployed, what they should do when they hear those sirens. So, I'm working on that right now, and hope to have more information for you today.
When talking to those people down there, did you, did they tell you how they wound up with this thing?
So, they bought it, they were going to use it at the camp, and then they decided not to because it was so big and loud that it was really over, but they needed proof of keeping it.
It would go well beyond the camp, right?
Yes, yes, it does. So, if we placed that at the animal shelter, everybody in the city of Connersville will want to hear it. It's got a range of effects, maybe like two miles in a radius, but people report hearing it up from 25 miles away, so it's loud. And it'll definitely cover the vast majority of the people in the county, I think.
Says that it would have cost us over $8,000 to purchase.
Right. So, the small investment that we do put in to get an electrician to hook it up, and then to purchase the piece that allows dispatch to be activated.
So, you think a single pole will support it?
Yes, it's designed to go on a single telephone pole.
Okay.
And there's a possibility we have one up there already, but I just haven't been up there and seen where the best placement would be for that.
Okay. Well, thanks, that, we'll, we'll go to work on that.
I'll have more later.
Okay. Highway department, Jay Havlin, do you have anything today?
I can let you, I'll let you know what's going on. We've been out doing, fixing a lot of ditches and trying to get some water off the road, putting cans in, we're trying to get meat cans in as ground as we can, if there ain't a less. We come onto a problem with one of our tilt trailers. The aisle before the pendle hitch was rusting off, and we took it over to McCombs', and he called us yesterday, come back and look at it. The whole underside of the tilt top on it is gone. It's an '86 trailer. The frame and everything's good, and the axles are all good. As long as he puts the pendle hitch back on it, he can build another type of top for it to fix it, and it's one of the trailers we use all the time. I just wanted to let you know what's going on. It's probably about $14,000 is the high estimate on what he said. He said, "I won't be that much," but he figured better give a high estimate than a loan. Wanted to let you know about it.
Have you looked to see what a new one cost? Have you looked to see what a new one would cost to trade this?
They're over thirty. And this one here's been around for forty years, so it's a pretty good trailer. The bad part is, the other one we got right above, which we always call the new trailer, is only ten years newer than that. But they're both pretty old. We're going to start looking at it pretty close, make sure it don't have problems too, because I don't need it to lose anything going down the road. Aside from that, I'm waiting on the brush cutter to get here so we can start using it, and we got our paper back, but they got to come down and work on it, because they didn't get everything done they had to get done. They got, we went to take it off the trailer and run out of fuel, but they didn't put any fuel in when they loaded it on the trailer. Then they had to come down and get it started, because we weren't about to touch it, and then say we messed something up on that new motor. We're waiting on them to come back.
So, they say they've got the engine fixed on?
Yeah. It sounded good when it run, but quit on us coming off the trailer. Kind of hard to tell at short a distance.
Yeah.
This is actually a different engine. The rebuilt one they had in the shop, I think is what it is. Because it's not a manufacturer, you know, revamped, I would think. We'll know better when we talk to the guy when we cut it back down.
Well, I hope this does it.
And we haven't tried distributor truck yet, because with all the rain, we haven't had a chance to get the oil in the truck. So, as soon as we get dries out enough, we'll get some oil in it, we'll try it and see what happens.
Okay. I hope that, I hope that's fixed, too.
Looks like it's going to be, but I'm, I'm not going to bet on nothing, because I've seen stuff fall apart down there. That's about all I have.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Jake? Well, thanks, Jake. Maintenance director Josh Yarbo. Josh, do you have anything for us today?
Oh, yeah, I'll just give you a little bit of an update. So, the light that we were talking about, you guys approved a few weeks ago. Duke coming down and putting a light in. I got an email saying that they're going to have that installed sometime this month, so that'd be good for safety reasons and security reasons. And then I kind of threw together like somewhat of a quarterly report. You know, I get phone calls every single day, all day long. I counted them the other day, sixty-two phone calls in one day, and, you know, they don't slow down, so, uh, there's a lot on the, on our workload, on our end, and I think when I was having a competition who gets more phone calls. But, uh, so, as far as probation goes, you know, we've pretty much remodeled everything over there. When I started, there was big holes in the wall, you know, the ceiling was disgusting, you know, all the ceiling tiles have been replaced. The, where they test probationers, they, you know, I completely remodeled that. And the bathroom over there that the staff uses have done that. So, upstairs, I don't know if you guys know, I tore out some carpet, I installed carpet in there, and just your basic painting of every room over there. For the courthouse, for those of you that don't know, the door out here on the north side is actually fixed. We no longer have to lock it with bars. And the key, it works. You can use your key on it, but if you don't have a key, I'm not going to, I'm not issuing any new ones, because we're, you know, for future, we're going to try different security measures as far as getting into the door, so if you have a key, good job, you know, you can use it, but I'm not going to issue anymore. As far as the health department store, it is fixed as well. The dogging on it used to have to sit there some mornings, it would take me ten minutes to get the door open, getting phone calls throughout the day saying it's relocked. It is now fixed, so that's no issue anymore. And then as far as the lighting goes in the courthouse, I have slowly started transitioning into LED. I've gotten rid of all the, not all of them, but as far as my inventory goes, my fluorescent lighting is slowly diminishing. I'm changing everything to LED, so all the entrance doors you can see are LED, and then I've eliminated some ballast throughout the building as well. So, that is a goal that we're going to try to reach, because I think Duke quoted this for like $76,000 to come in and do it for us, when, you know, I do a couple here and there, and, you know, we'll, we'll see. It won't be done, you know, in a month, or probably not even this year, but, you know, over time, we will get there and save a lot of money that way. As far as the jail goes, if you haven't been over there yet, the admin side looks phenomenal. We painted it, they got some new desks and the flooring, it looks really good over there. But, you know, everything, everyday repairs, you know, actually fixing stuff, not going in there and band-aiding it, so to speak. Things are getting, they're moving right along. The basement is getting cleared out, which leads me to the paint company. We've actually got the garage door out, it's framed, insulated, the siding's on the outside of the sheet metal, and all the racking is put up, which is pretty huge. They knocked it out in a couple days. All we got to do is repaint the floor, and that will be good to go. I resealed all the doors that are out there, put new seals on them. And then I, John, my part-timer, he is actually doing, he's going to be my landscaping guy, so he's going to be focusing on keeping the outside looking good. I don't know if you guys have seen it yet, but yesterday he worked on the front of the jail. He power washed the entrance there, and it looks phenomenal. We're going to paint it, planning on getting some master seal and sealing, because it still leaks pretty bad up there. I'm not real sure what their intentions was with that part of the building, but it's just, I don't know, it always holds water. When we went up there yesterday, we had about two, three inches of water sitting up there. So, I'm not real sure what we're going to do about that, but we will be repainting it probably with some sort of, something, something a little better, that's going to last a little bit longer. So, his next thing is going to, he's going to go around the courthouse and all the limestone on the bottom, you know, the first eight foot of the building, he is going to pressure wash that, clean that up, and then he's going to be digging into roots and pulling up whatever it is that's growing out there, you know, keeping trees looking good, and he's going to do that for all three buildings down here soon to be fore, so he's pretty excited about that. And then, yeah, I think that that's about it as far as, you know, there's obviously a whole lot more going on that, as far as like, you know, the air handler change, you know, coming up and all that, filter changing, so that it's just a, a lot more for a little different time to discuss, so, but that's, that's about all I got.
Did they get the fire alarms in here fixed?
So, about that fire alarm system, I've been talking with Wade, and we've been trying to see the way our system works is, there's like three or four people that have their hands in the cookie jar, and doesn't make a whole lot of sense, like why do we have one company, they service our sprinkler systems and our smoke detectors, and then another company has our panels, and then another company gets a relay from the panel so they can relay it to dispatch? It don't make a whole lot of sense. So, we are trying to get some things together, possible quotes, maybe trying to see what makes more sense. Obviously, going with one company is the way to go. That way, if something does go wrong, we, they can't point the finger at one another. But, uh, so, the troubles that are on the panel currently is SD card eight. It was there from pretty much since I've been here, I believe. And that says, what that is telling them is, it's a phone line. So, we have two phone lines coming into our, our panels, and we, of course, and our, Simplex came down here, Johnson Controls, they came down here, he hooked up the phone, bypassed the, and put it in test, and he hooked up to both lines, they both dialed out, and we did that two or three times, so he claims that a more seasoned individual that works for them has to come down with their older laptop, because he's only been there for five years, and he said his is too new of programming for our system. He did suggest a update for our fire alarm system. And then there's another one, and I've talked to like five or six different individuals through Corson's and Johnson Controls. We are getting an alarm that nobody's ever seen before. They reset the system on a Friday, and came back in on Monday and it's back up, and it's just a, they said it's just a true false alarm, like it, they said it doesn't go to anything, but they don't know exactly what it, why it keeps tripping, so as far as safety goes, he said that he doesn't see an issue with it, but he doesn't really know either, so I think Simplex is supposed to be back out here probably, I don't think this, I think he said next week, and it'd be a more seasoned individual.
Right now, the, if the alarm is pulled by hand, did it go off? And if it, will it automatically go off?
Yes, yes. If we, if we pulled the alarm right now, it would go off.
Would it ring into dispatch?
It's supposed to.
So, if you guys don't mind, so that alarm system, the problem is, we did have a fire alarm here, it was a false alarm, but what happened is, the company that's supposed to be monitoring alarms was never pinged, and when we inquired about it, they said that it had been since November of '21, since it's actually pinged where it was supposed to. So, it's been over a year that it's not pinging, and then the company, the person that's supposed to be monitoring that was never notified of the alarm, so therefore, they never notified dispatch. It was one of Josh's maintenance men that heard the alarm, called Josh, Josh called me, I called dispatch, said, "Send fire, there's an alarm." So, but the alarm does work. Everybody left the building like they should, they, you know, they, we did what was right here. It's just something, there's a glitch in the system and it's updated, but that, that's, that's what it is, that phone line issue, it's not, it's not sending it to the right person. So, I did request a quote from Corson's on what it would cost to monitor our system, because the person monitoring has not been real responsive, you know, we call, he's usually busy or out on another job or something like that, so I asked them what it would cost to have that, and the quote was relatively cheap for Corson's to monitor. At least then we would have some redundancy and less people touching that alarm system. Is that good?
Yeah, that's it.
And it's reasonable to expect that this thing can be fixed relatively soon? Okay, good.
I do have one more thing. So, I believe it was last week or the week prior, Zach had got with me and informed me that our elevator, there's, there's some issues with security on that. I've been looking into a keypad for the elevator for different access points on that elevator, to get you to different places, and I do have a quote. I did not print it, I was still kind of looking at it myself and looking at other options, because I think it was for, it was through Vertical Systems who does our servicing of the elevator, and it was like right around $3,000, and that was them installing a keypad. Right now, we do have a entry points for a key, however, the internals of that are all plastic, and the one that we are needing is actually broken at the moment and has been for several years, and what this is to prevent is somebody to walk in areas that they're not supposed to. So, that is something that we're also in the works of, so most likely, next me and I'll bring the quote, because I'm trying to see other places as well, see where, what our options are. The only thing that makes sense with verticals systems is the simple fact they're not going to have to run any wires. It could get quite pricey if we need a different route. Like if we had key fobs and linked them into our system over at the jail or over at probation, they would have to run wires up and down the elevator shaft, and it would just get really expensive, so with vertical systems, we'd be able to just have a keypad, plug it into the existing stuff and go from there, so, and now that is it.
You talking this elevator?
Yes, yeah.
Anything else to say about it? Josh, you're doing a good job. I know you're busy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything today?
Yes, sir. Just here to present to you guys my annual jail report. I emailed it to you guys earlier, but just wanted to come over and talk about it a little bit, and if you have any questions, we can discuss that. This is a report that each sheriff is mandated to provide to the council and commissioners in different positions in the county. Basically, just tells you what we're doing and what we need at the jail and how things are working. Second page, you can see booking statistics are about the same. We had 793 admissions this year between male and female, again, stayed about the same as it was last year. Average daily population stayed about the same, we're right at 138 for our ADP, and in 2021, it was 136, so looking about the same. Month by month, on the next page, you can see where in January, February, March, it's, we're usually pretty high, and then it slowly starts to drop off. That usually happens every year. We got as high as 173 inmates in our jail, which is 114 is our max, so a little crowded, and then we got as low as 104. Department of Corrections money, I'm not sure what happened in 2021, if you look on that, it said we made $62,000. I didn't do this report then, it was somebody else, so I'm not sure where they got their numbers from, I'm not even sure if it's correct, but that's what they said. And then last year, our numbers were at 243,000 that we earned from the Department of Corrections. Now, that money may start going down because level six felons are going to start going back to DOC, but we're still housing DOC inmates and level six felons longer than, DOC gives us, we've got five days, and then we can bill for them. DOC never picks people up, never, once in within the five days, so we use, once they're sentenced, we usually hold them for three, four, five weeks before we send them to DOC, so we're going to get paid for that still. And then, once we get the female center open, DOC is going to start getting crowded again, they'll need places to hold inmates, and hopefully, we'll have some space to house some DOC inmates in our, our facility. The next page, again, if you have any questions, just stop me. Top 10 charges, that's always, battery's always at the top. That includes simple battery where somebody smacks somebody, as far, and it goes all the way up to somebody strangling or trying to kill somebody, domestic batteries are also included in that. Possession of meth, we've seen a rise in that over the last couple years, so, and that's continuing to, to grow this year. Resisting probation violation, possession of a syringe went down quite a bit. 149 in 2021, all the way down to 61 arrests in 2022. I don't know if the guys are just getting tired of arresting people for it when they're being given out, but also, that went down quite a bit. Our staffing analysis is something I did when I first came in as chief deputy 10, 11, 12 years ago. When you do a staffing analysis, it's not by the number of inmates. If we get down to 40 inmates, we still need the same amount of staff because it's five positions, so we've got two pods, those are supposed to be manned 24/7, we've got a floor that's supposed to be manned, a control room, and booking, so we're supposed to have five people working in our jail all the time. There's times where we have three, there's times where we have six or seven, that's the way the schedule works, that was the best way to get some overlap during our busiest hours. That's why we moved to a four-on-four-off schedule, 10-hour shifts. So, according to this standard, we still need, you gave, you gave us one a couple years ago, but we're still in need of five for our current facility. Now, when we get the female facility, we're going to need 10, as long as we still retrofit our jail to be able to control the women's center. Now, if our jail can't control the women's center from our control room by popping doors and maintaining visual on, on the inmates, then we're going to need 15 employees to manage that, because there will be three positions, there'll be a control officer will be in the female center, things don't work out, and then you'll have to have one for, two for the floor at all the time, all times, because you don't want one person going into a fight by themselves, so you have to have two. That's the staffing analysis, again, that's, it's been the same forever. Transports, last year, we drove approximately 65,000 miles. That's Ryan Young doing the bulk of that, he's our transport officer, he's, I think he put about 40,000 miles on his vehicle. That's going back and forth to prisons, picking people up, bringing them to court. A lot of our transports this year, or last year, and so far this year, are juveniles. We're getting a lot of juvenile transports. We used to have a contract with Muncie where they would come get them, take them back up to Muncie, bring them to court, take them back if they had to go. We don't have that contract no more, so they don't do that no more. So, now we have to take them, and unfortunately, Muncie's, all these juvenile facilities are pretty full, so we're going as far as South Bend sometimes twice a week where we have to go get them, bring them back for court, possibly take them back. I've talked with Ryan about trying to, to figure something out, he's trying his hardest to get people just to go to Muncie, so it's a, it's a lot easier drive for us, but when we got to take them to South Bend, or Mr. Walker, maybe another one, these are far transports. And then some of our site evals, when we get somebody committed, we're going to Logan's Fort, Evansville, again, that's a long drive, so that's, we're racking up. So, that's, we're racking up the miles when it comes to that. Overtime in the jail, we get $77,000 in overtime. That's because we're losing staff. We have, we have to maintain a staffing level of at least three officers is our standard that we've always went with. Uh, when we get above 160, we, we like to have at least four officers. So, when we get above that, we have to call somebody in because it's just unsafe for our officers to have to deal with that. Uh, the schedule has sort of helped with that, but, uh, when people quit, you got to fill those spots and that's with our overtime. So, that's where that's at. Uh, medical, we still have quality correctional. We spent $254,000 last year, um, a little higher than 2021, but not by much. So, it stayed about the same. We've had, uh, we had an inmate that had a lot of heart issues. I mean, he was going once a week. He was here on drug charges, so we couldn't really just let him go. But he was going about once a week to get something done with his heart and the bill started racking up. Uh, HIT does take care of, inmates cannot receive insurance unless, um, HIT will cover it if an inmate stays in the hospital for more than 24 hours. So, uh, if an inmate can stay and if they did get surgery and they're there for more than 24 hours, uh, as long as the hospital signs them up for HIT, they will pick it up. And we, quality is, is on that. They, they make sure that they're getting people signed up for that and they're billing for that. Uh, just talked to the hospital the other day and they were asking, why do we send everybody to the ER? And I said, because that's what we've always done. And they said, well, why can't you just send them to the immediate care? Because it'd be a lot cheaper and possibly a lot quicker. So, we're looking into that. If that was, if that's going to be a cheaper option, that's what we'll do as long as the hospital's okay with that. Uh, jail kitchen, 184,000 last year. That's a dollar twenty-two a mil. Um, again, that's with Tiger. We're more than likely going to change, uh, and go with a different service, which is going to be, uh, considerable cost savings. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it's going to be quite a bit of money that we'll save. Uh, programs and services, GED program. Uh, Ms. Dickerson has been doing that since I've been there, I think. She comes down, she does the GED test and then the safe serve or self-serve, whatever it is. She does that also and, uh, we got a lot of inmates that take advantage of that and they can get it timed after that. Church services, we always provide as much, as much church as we can to the inmates because, uh, it's one thing they need. And then counseling, um, Joel Conway comes down a lot and talks to our inmates and tries to get them into rehab. Uh, does rehab always work? No, but it's, I talked to a guy yesterday that said it took me five times and I finally straightened my life out. Just keep trying, I guess. Um, so Joel does a lot of that stuff. He comes down and helps out a lot of people. Uh, therapy, community, community corrections takes care of that. Um, they do the male and female blocks right now and servicing 21 inmates at a time, uh, for the, the length of the class. Maintenance projects, Josh talked about that a little bit. Uh, these are completed projects. A lot of glass was, was fixed, a lot of leaks, um, painting. Uh, was the water tank in the basement, hot water tank was leaking for several years and they finally fixed that, so hopefully that's some cost savings. But there's been a lot of maintenance projects that have been completed that we're thankful to Josh and his staff. Uh, and then the end, they always want us to put unfunded maintenance projects. That's the fun part. Uh, inmate showers, they're inmate showers. The ventilation's awful. There's a lot of rust. I've included pictures so you guys can see it. A lot of rust, the doors are starting to, uh, were starting to rot away and I think we went to shower curtains for most of them, for all of them. So, we got shower curtains now, it's a little less private, but, um, but the, the showers, the ventilation system are, are rough. Uh, the cell door glass, a lot, again, we replace them and they keep breaking. So, Josh is continuing to do that and replacing these windows, but there are several, um, that are still broke. Uh, control room floor, that's something that's got to be addressed this year. I mean, it has to, it's just, it's dangerous. I mean, come over and walk on it and you'll trip every time you walk into control room. Uh, you can see the pictures, the, it's just, it's like a drop ceiling on the floor. It's just a weird system, I guess, but, um, getting quotes for that kind of floor, I don't know who does it. Uh, we're going to have to get innovative. Josh has got a couple of ideas and maybe we can try that and fix it. But, um, it's got to be addressed because it's, it's pretty bad. Uh, the administration flooring, like, like he said, that was breaking apart. Uh, this is stuff from last year, so that's been addressed and fixed and it looks amazing right now. So, I'm thankful to you guys for paying for that. Uh, cleaning, uh, we just always have to clean the jail. The inmates do the most, most part of it. Um, but our control, or our, um, lobby of the jail, uh, it's in bad shape. Me and Josh have got some different ideas to, to fix that. So, hopefully we can get to that this year. Uh, the air handling system, you guys are well aware of that. Uh, it just needs attention. Jail inspector says it's not spitting out enough air, I guess. And when it's hot, it's hot and when it's cold, it's cold. Uh, the floor sometimes, I mean, we've got jail officers walking into one of the blocks when it's 90 degrees out and it's about 85 in the block and the floor starts to sweat and it gets a little slick in there. And, uh, it's, it's a little dangerous. Uh, the camera system, we always include that because our camera system is, it's awful. It's, uh, you look at it and everything's blurry. You can barely tell who's back there. Uh, now that we have body cams, that really helps because our jail officers are wearing body cams. So, these aren't as important, but for our control officer to maintain visual of all the officers, sometimes it's hard with the, the camera system that we have. So, eventually that's going to also have to be updated. Uh, the body scanner, it does an amazing job. Um, it was paid for through a grant, but we didn't get the dual purpose. It'd have been nice if we had another $125,000 to get that. Uh, at some point, maybe asking for a grant to, to get the dual purpose. It just shows things a lot better. Uh, right now, you, you sort of have to know what you're looking for. If you've got the dual purpose, you can just see stuff. I mean, it's, it's a lot easier, but we do find a lot of stuff on the body scanner. Our padded cell, again, you can see the pictures. Uh, they love tearing that up. You get somebody in there that is talking to themselves and seeing animals in the cell with them. They're not having the best day and then they start picking at the padded cell and eventually it gets ripped. Uh, we always try to charge people restitution for this because it is expensive to, to repair, but sometimes you can't get money out of them. But that's going to have to be addressed also. Uh, Josh, we talked about the, the perimeter of the jail. Uh, like they pressure wash the, the top that says fake kind of gel, looks really good. Um, but the, the bushes and whatnot around it, some of that's going to need to be addressed and it sounds like he's got a plan for that. And then the door intercom system, that's becoming obsolete. Uh, the door locks are, are really hard to, to fix and repair. It took about four years to get one fixed. Uh, so it'd be nice to, to get a new locking system, but that's going to be really expensive. Um, but hopefully he can continue to piece things together and figure it out. Uh, but the intercom system, the buttons that the inmates can push back in the block to reach our jail officers, um, cause otherwise they've got to stand in the camera and go like that. Uh, so that's our tech that comes down, says that it's the old, it's old and there's nothing that they can do to repair that. Uh, we're just going to hope that it doesn't go out. It hasn't yet, uh, but it's, uh, it's on its last leg. And I hope maybe when they retrofit the women's center to us, maybe that stuff will become part of that. I'm not sure what all that's going to entail, but hopefully that they'll be able to do something with that and fix it. Any questions?
Zach, on that intercom system, I'm, I'm wondering, does the industry, anywhere in the industry of correctional facilities, have they ever tried or using wireless intercom systems?
I, I assume that's probably what they're going to do now. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I haven't looked into it enough, but I know that, uh, I think the last time we got a quote, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars to fix it and that was a while ago. So, it's, it's going to be expensive.
Those old, uh, hardwired systems like we have over there, I would think by now should have been obsolete and sent in better.
And I guess we'll find out when, Stanley is the, the company that services ours. So, the new building, uh, I think Stanley's the one gave the quote for that. So, we'll see what they put in that and we'll, we'll see what, what it looks like.
Okay.
I don't know if we'll do the same system or not. Can't do the same system because it's pretty obsolete.
Have I got any questions for the sheriff? Well, Zach, that is a good report.
All right, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Very comprehensive. I've, I've read the, the electronic version you sent us the other day by email, but, uh, being here and presenting it allows everybody that sees these meetings at home to explore all this information. Um, that's not a, that's not a cheap hotel you run over there.
No, it's not. No, it's not. And if anybody has any questions at all, uh, Jane has a copy of it. Um, it's for the public to come and view if they want, so.
Okay.
Not hiding anything. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney, do you have anything for us today?
I'm not.
Okay. Does anyone have any mail they'd like to share?
I don't.
Any mail? Okay. Um, all right, on our old business, we, uh, we met recently with, uh, the fellows from Gordian and North Mechanical on the JOC program of contract. We, uh, I think we felt at the time that we wanted to move ahead with that. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. Um, we were just proposing to, um, the request is that we would move forward with using them to get our, our next, uh, bid. For the bidding process, the job program eliminates that need to have all the bids come in from the outside. So, they've already chosen their people and North Mechanical happens to be one of the companies. So, we felt comfortable with allowing them to, we wanted to enter into agreement with utilizing their service and, um, having North Mechanical provide us with a, another proposal or quote.
Okay. And would you like to, um, send them a notice that we requested a proposal through the JOC program?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to, um, communicate a request for proposal, uh, to our contacts at Gordian and North Mechanical for a, a plan to replace the air handling system at the jail. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We'll notify the right people about that. In our new business, or does anybody else have anything on, in our old business? Okay, in our new business, um, we have a proposed resolution for a multi-hazard mitigation plan. Now, Wade, you, that's your department. You sent that out here recently?
I did. So, yesterday, Conrissville City Council adopted this plan as a resolution. I also would need the county to adopt it as a resolution so that we can implement that. Um, it is tied to grant funding, so it's important that we have that. And it's a FEMA requirement if we have one. Uh, after going through the plan, uh, I've talked with, um, the city mayor. I've talked with Conrissville Fire Chief and several others. Um, it, it's a good plan, even though we didn't build it, you know, I did. I went a part of it, that it is a good plan. Um, and it, the police center did a great work on, on building that. I know I sent it to you all recently and I'm sure you got a chance to go through it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, there's an awful lot there.
There is.
I'll admit, I haven't read it all.
Hmm.
But it's, I didn't see anything that stood out to me.
Goodness, uh, we need this plan if a disaster does hit to help get FEMA money, right?
Yes, and it's tied to MPG grant funding as well. So, um, we're required by FEMA to have this mitigation plan along with several other plans, but we'll be building those if we have. It, it lays out what our critical infrastructure is in the city and the county. Uh, and it's involved stakeholders from, from school corporation to the county, to the city, uh, and emergency management as well as all of our public safety in the county.
Do you just need a motion to adopt this?
There's a.
We have a, an official resolution here, Dale.
By the way, I sent that to Jane after she had already typed up one from scratch, so I may.
No, it was just funny. I mean, like, it was like two minutes, like I had sent on the one night and then you're like, go ahead, here's the draft.
Well, in other words, Wade, one thing we'd like everybody to understand that if, if we had a, a major national, uh, or a natural disaster here like they had in some, down in Sullivan the other day and we needed, uh, federal disaster assistance, without this medic mitigation plan, we wouldn't be eligible, would we?
Uh, it's highly likely. Um, FEMA does different things depending on who comes. Um, I, I wouldn't say that we would be totally ineligible, um, but they would be asking for those plans and these are public documents. So, if we have counties, city residents that want to see them, I'm happy to share. They just make appointment with my office. But, um, it, it, it goes along with everything that FEMA requires of a county. So, it is a requirement and depending on their generosity at the time would dictate whether we're going to be eligible for something or not. So.
Okay.
That's kind of a roundabout answer to that question, but I don't, I don't really speak for FEMA, so I don't want to put words in, in their mouth.
We'll make a motion.
I don't know what you mean.
Uh, that we go ahead, I think it's good. Um, we'll go ahead and adopt this, uh, multi-hazard mitigation plan and the resolution 2023, part two looks like.
Second.
And we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve, uh, the resolution adopting the multi-hazard mitigation plan titled Resolution 2022 dash.
2023, R2.
2023, R2. Is there any further questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Dale, uh, Jane?
Thank you.
I did change your question. You won.
Did you?
It's more dear. It's like more professional.
Thanks for doing all the work on that, Wade. Okay. We also have a, an agreement proposal here. We recently had a meeting on with the, about the solar project. It's going to be partially in Fayette County. We have a, uh, an agreement to, on the retention of Becker Kelly to look after our interests during this solar, uh, project installation. And we have a, um, an agreement proposal here. We'll also be, sometime in the future, be getting a, uh, a similar agreement uh, between us and Barnes and Thornburg. Uh, Jeff, we wouldn't expect that within the foreseeable future, right?
I would presume so. I mean, they're operating under the assumption we're going to retain them, so yeah. That's a document for them, not necessarily for our desires, so, yeah. It's a document for them, not necessarily for our desires, so, yeah.
I'm going to approve the agreement with Baker and Tilly.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the adoption of the agreement between Baker Tilly and Fayette County. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Okay, and there's only one of those, right?
There's two places that need to be signed.
Okay, I'll get to that here in a minute. The Fayette County Ministerial Association every year has a, an observance of the National Day of Prayer at the ceremony on the front lawn of the courthouse. This year, the National Day of Prayer is on Thursday, May the 4th. And they would like our permission to occupy the front lawn of the courthouse this year.
I'll second that.
And we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to allow and support the National Day of Prayer event by the Fayette County Ministerial Association on Thursday, May the 4th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Is there any patron concerns? Dick, you haven't said a word today.
It's nice to hear the visit again.
All that leaves us is claims and payroll.
I have one question on the claims. The claim for Horizon that they sent, that you emailed out?
No.
Is that in this?
No. And actually, Jay had taken pictures at the time and, and he thinks they bear the liability for that, that we don't, so I said we just need to, need to get with Jeff on how we're gonna respond.
Didn't appear they had their cable buried as deep as it's supposed to be.
Well, the way I read it, they had on their, the dollar amount was an open-end bill. I don't think that's, that ain't kosher. I'm going to move to, I have claims and payroll.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to them, these two just need, just due.
Need a statement.
Yeah, I, there is one around here somewhere. Just gotta make myself an emergency note. Okay. How many we got? Three?
No, just two different agreements and each one just needs signed in one spot.
Baker Tilly, agreements, only ask for one signature. That one. I'll just have another thought. Before I ask anybody if we're forgetting anything, do we have some cleanup work to do with our county health board appointments?
Yes, did Matt go ahead and email you guys?
I don't remember seeing anything from Matt, he could have, but I, if he did, I didn't see it before a meeting.
Okay, because he said they are, they are, all are still serving and he asked if he needed to present them and I said that he would necessarily have to come to a meeting, that he couldn't just email you guys. But I, my understanding from his email to me is that he would like to see, it's three appointments, to see those people reappointed. It'd be Scott Key Faber as a citizen appointment, Dr. Christie as a dentist appointment and then Kelly Gettiger as an RN appointment, for school representative appointment.
Okay. Did, did you two see anything from Matt?
I didn't.
Okay, so he, he must not have sent it, but, alright, we have three, three members? We have three members of the health board somehow or another during our appointments earlier in the year got, fell through tracks, we missed. And they're willing and able to stay and Matt wants them to stay, but to make everything proper, we need to make their appointments official. So I don't think we would be in violation doing that on the spur of the moment today, would we?
I don't think so.
Okay, one of them is Scott Key Faber?
Yes.
And who are the other two? Has it all three of these expire at the same time?
No, one actually expired in '21 and we just didn't catch it. So two expired at the end of 2022, but one had expired at the end of 2021.
Okay.
And they are four-year terms, so you'd be reappointing Scott Key Faber and Dr. Christie till 12/31 of '26 and then Kelly Gettiger would be appointed through 12/31 of '25.
I'm going to approve Scott Key Faber, Thomas Christie and Kelly Gettiger to their appropriate positions on the health board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to retroactively reappoint Tom, Scott Key Faber, Tom Christie and Kelly Gettiger to the Fayette County Health Board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And we do apologize for that oversight. That's why I always ask, are we forgetting anything today? Well, I do, not that anybody else does, but I certainly do. Well, that concludes our agenda for today. Are we forgetting anything else?
I'm going to adjourn.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourned, thank you all very much.